So, welcome, everybody. This is a new thing for us. We've never done these sessions for... Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Does it say "Goals for Today"?
Yes.
Great. I just want to make sure it's the right screen that you're seeing. So we've not done these sessions for board members, but at least, you know, in the time that I've been here, we've never had three new board members at the same time. And, you know, I do think that this is something that, you know, we just need to do in general, but we had never really felt the immediate need to do it. So it was great to have you guys ask questions and us come to the realization like, oh, yeah, we really probably need to do more than what we've done in the past to help board members roll in. So this is part of our effort to help you to, you know, understand the organization and the work that we're doing a little bit more. As an added bonus, Kathy Winchinbatch, our new executive director for budget and finance, also gets to get a little bit of a preview on some of these things as well. So it's also a good induction for Kathy. I think everybody knows everybody else. And let me just check real quick to see who else is on here. I think everybody knows the rest of my team and the rest of my team knows the board members. So let's dive right in. We have a lot to cover today. We're going to be doing an overview of the Portland Promise. Then we're going to just do a general orientation to our organizational structure, which is then a preview for how some of these other sessions that are coming up. And then tonight, we're going to go in more depth into our operations department. So that's going to be our focus for tonight. Okay. So just to review a little bit of what we've done to date for board members, we had the, you know, introduction to the role of the board member with our legal counsel, Bruce Smith, back in December, to sort of give you an overview of key policies that affect the board as well as legal responsibilities and so on. We have been involved in the Race in America course, which we've now completed. And that's been a part of, that's been for all board members, something that we have done over the fall and into this month. And then tonight, we're doing the overview of, you know, what we're trying to accomplish with training, the orientation to the Portland Promise and our operations departments. And so, you know, specifically under that, today, we're going to talk about food service, IT, custodial, and transportation. And then this is not part of our operations, but trying to spread out all of our sessions, we're also going to have Assistant Superintendent Aaron Thompson talk about our school management operation, which is the division of the Portland schools that he leads. And so Aaron will be our closer tonight, as he is on so many other nights. So... And then, you know, subsequent sessions, the next one, which I believe is next week, is Human Resources, Communications, and Multilingual, Multicultural. So that will be led by Barb. And the communications multilingual multicultural session will be led by Grace Valenzuela. And then the last one is a little bit of a potpourri of, you know, multiple things, academics and finance as central office departments. And we also thought it would be important for you to have an orientation to Portland Adult Education, because oftentimes, people don't realize that Portland Adult Ed is a part of the Portland Public Schools. And, you know, for those who, you know, who have been around, and I think everybody knows this, it is our largest operation by far, you know. So they serve close to 4,000 people over the course of the year. So for, you know, any single school, that is our largest population. So a little bit of... Oops, let me go back. How did I go back? There we go. This is something that we publish every year. It's on our website. So it gives you an insight into our district at a glance. It's there for the entire public. So, you know, if we will... You may have the PowerPoint, because we posted it on Board Docs. But if not, if you just go to our website, it's right on the front page in District Information, and you can click through. And so, you know, when people ask you questions about the school district, this gives you an at-a-glance of some of the, you know, sort of most significant facts about the district. So, you know, our total student population, our budget, the number of employees, some of the key metrics, our graduation and post-secondary enrollment numbers, the types of, the many languages that are spoken, the number of languages that are spoken in the top 10, and then our distribution of our population. Over here, you also see some of the enrollment in different categories of students, so gifted and talented and other types of enrollments. And then, you know, the last page has the board members and, you know, their contact information, as well as some key information about district leadership and so on. So this is available. We also have this printed. And, you know, it's, you can find it when, like, when we're in person and you walk into our building. It's something that we have printed out for people to get. So this is a helpful little resource that you may want to access from time to time. So this is the Portland Promise graphic. The Portland Promise is our comprehensive plan. It's our, the way that we organize our thinking about the work that we're trying to do as a school district. So this was, when I came into the district, there was a comprehensive plan that had been in place for six years, which was its intended life. And so the first thing that the board asked me to do was to create the next iteration of the comprehensive plan. And so that became what we call the Portland Promise. This is what you most often see when we talk about it. It's the sort of the visual that shows that the four things that were focused on are achievement, whole student, and equity, and that it sits on this foundation that is our people. So the folks that are, you know, the Portland Public Schools are the basis on which all of those other things happen. So we deliberately put people, you know, at the base of it, because it is what everything else rests on. There is a more extensive Portland Promise document that is also available on the district webpage. And this goes into more detail about what we mean when we talk about our achievement goal, how we measure that. And we're going to be spending a significant amount of time on where we are in relation to those metrics, the way that we measure, you know, our work, and our strategies. The, what are the kinds of things that we need to do in order, that we believe we need to do in order to be able to achieve our goals? And so for each of our goals, achievement, whole student, equity, and people, we have some metrics, ways of measuring, that we're going to be talking about. And then, you know, specific strategies. We've always said that the strategies would be evolving. So we would do them, then we would measure and see whether they had actually helped us to move or, you know, or not. And then, you know, add additional ones along the way. So, you know, you will see that when we talk about the Portland Promise, that we are doing things that you may not see in this document, but that we are tying directly to those goals. So again, when people ask you, what are some of the things that we're trying to do as a district? You can, you know, you can reference this document, which is also on the, you know, on the front page of our website under District Information. There is, you know, information about the Portland Promise, and that's where this document lives. So that's the sort of overview to the Portland Promise. I'm going to spend some time going into detail around the measures that are associated with it. But before I do that, I want to just pause and see if you have any questions so far. And just jump in. Don't feel like you have to raise your hand or anything like that. So anytime, just... Okay. I don't hear anybody popping in. I don't see anybody. So, you know, I'm assuming you're ready to move on. So again, this is, these are the metrics under our achievement goal. So it's, you know, everything along a pathway from, you know, early childhood to post-secondary. And we have sort of steps along the way that we believe are representative of how we're doing as we work our way along this continuum. So the first one is pre-K readiness. So that is, students come to school with, you know, the, you know, the knowledge and skills, the readiness to be able to be successful in school. And for all of these slides, which by the way, I will acknowledge upfront that these are, and I said to Emily when we were talking about this earlier, we have some pretty ugly slides here for our data today. So these are, you know, my sort of homemade slides. So they're not, they're not very pretty. We do have a, we do have a new Director of Data and Technology, and I'm super excited about some of the skills that he brings and will be, you'll meet him, you know, shortly. And so, as I said to Emily, hopefully, this is the last ugly, you know, Portland Promise presentation that you will ever have to endure. But it has all of the information in there. It's just not as pretty as I'd like it to be. So what we measure here is the percentage of the kids that are coming into school that have been in what is considered a high-quality pre-kindergarten program. And so those are things like Head Start, main school-based pre-kindergarten programs like our own, or other pre-kindergarten programs that could be community-based, but that are considered to be at Step 3 or Step 4 in the main rating, quality and quality rating system. So that's a system that these centers apply and become certified as Level 1, 2, 3, or 4. And if kids come to us that have been in Level 3 or Level 4 pre-kindergarten programs, then we consider those are kids that are coming in to the district having had that readiness experience. You know, our target, and this is where, you know, you'll, we'll be talking about this at the meeting on next Tuesday. We'll be doing a presentation on our scale-up of pre-kindergarten. You know, part of our thinking around scaling up pre-kindergarten is having more students who come into the school district that have had these types of experiences and working with partners across the community to help more childcare centers become Step 3 or Step 4 certified so that they can, so, you know, so that students will have those experiences. So our target, we set, was 62. When we did our first baseline for the 1819 school year, we had 47% of the kids that started in kindergarten came from a quality Head Start or, you know, from a quality pre-kindergarten program. And we are not, we don't have any updates on that. But, so that gives you an idea of where we are in relation to our, to our goal. So we're going to talk here about the different steps along the way. First one that we look at is third grade reading. And for this, we use the main state assessments. That's changing going forward. So we're going to have to revisit this and try to figure out how do we continue our evaluation of this. But here you have for third grade reading. And the reason we focus on third grade reading, first, that's the first year that all kids are given a state assessment. And two, we know that reading, that third grade foundational reading is critical to being able to perform well, you know, further down the, further down the grades. So when we did the baseline in 2016-17, it was 52%. This is the aggregate for all third grade. In 27, in 2017 and 18, that dropped to 44% and it was back up to 57% in, you know, in the last year that we, that we assessed last year because of the pandemic, the state suspended assessments. So that we don't have a 1920 assessment, and we won't have the same assessment for 2021. So we're going to need to figure out how do we look at this going forward. We look next at fourth grade math. That's, again, an important step in mathematical development are the foundational skills that students... Let me just turn off my phones before they start beeping all over the place when people start texting. So the foundational math skills at the fourth grade level, that's one of the places that we look at. And here you see, our target was having, you know, an aggregate of 60% of our students. 2016-17, it was 52%. It went down in 2017-18. And I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong slide. Those numbers looked... Okay. So our target... Target was 50%. I'm not going to touch anything so that it doesn't bounce. Our baseline was 42%. 2017-18, it stayed at 42% and it dropped in 1819 to 36%. Our next measure is seventh grade reading, where we set a target of 55%. And when we started, our baseline was 48%. It stayed, you know, pretty much at the same level 2017 and 18. And then it increased significantly in 2018-19. So I think you'll see, you know, in the next slide that the story is very different in reading and math. Some of that is tied to the actual assessment and tied to the, you know, this is similar to performance at the state level. So that's what makes me think that it also has something to do with the assessment. But clearly, we're a long way from where we wanted to be, particularly in math. And so that is why, you know, our focus around our curriculum work has been so heavily focused in around improving math instruction in the district. So this is our eighth grade math, our target, you know, and then our baseline performance and where we currently are. So shifting then to the graduation rate. So this is...
I'm sorry, Javier. Can I just ask you a quick question? You had mentioned that the, I believe it was the third grade assessment is changing?
Correct, yes.
Does that, the overall assessment carry through to fourth, seventh, eighth? Or is it just the... Okay.
The state is, the state is discontinuing its assessment and rolling out a different assessment. You know, I think that that is a source of significant frustration for educational leaders across the state is this constant shifting of assessments at the state level. Not to say that we love the assessment, that we think it's a great measure of student performance. You know, if you sort of go back to the conversation that we had recently around access and sort of assessment in general, you know, our approach to it is that it's a, one of the ways that we should look at performance, not the only one. And, but clearly, the extent to which it stays, you know, the same assessment, it allows us to do some of this. And, you know, if it shifts all over the map, then it makes this very difficult.
Yeah, you can't, yeah. Thank you.
Yep. So this is our graduation rate. The, we do not, the state has not published the 1920 graduation rates. We look at both the, all three, the four-year graduation rate, the five-year graduation rate, and the six-year graduation rate. And so this summarizes what we have, where we are. In our goal, we've said that, which I didn't include in here, our graduation rate goal is 92%. So we are not, we're not there yet, but we've seen some steady improvements in graduation rates over time. So particularly when you look at, you know, five-year graduation rates, where, you know, those are students who may not have finished in the standard four years, but they had, you know, one or two courses or something along those lines, and we gave them an opportunity to finish those. And so that, you know, 89% for the class that would have graduated in 1718. So that's how those kids did when they graduated. When you throw in the academic work that they did in 1819, was 89%. So the next thing that I'm going to talk about is where, you know, these slides don't look as good. They looked bad in their normal form and in presentation form. They looked particularly bad since the logo is in the middle of some of those data. I'm not going to walk through each of these sort of in detail, but I want to just orient you to it and then let you ask questions about it. So what, the way that we look at this is, we set a target of, you know, cutting the gap in half. We did that because that is the way that the state is measuring school performance or was measuring school performance, potentially still measuring school performance, but using a different assessment going forward. And so the idea was that a school would be considered to be doing a good job on equity if it was closing the gap between different populations by half over the next, you know, 10 years. And so that's where we, that's how we set our expectations for gap reductions. And we do that looking at our English language learners in comparison to students who are not English language learners, our economically disadvantaged students compared to our non-economically disadvantaged students, and our students of color compared to our white students. So that's what you see there is the performance of our students in those different groups over this period of time. So from the baseline year, which was 1617 to 1819, I believe, yeah, 1819 is the last year that we have because 1920, the assessment wasn't administered. So this is what, this is where we are. This is for kindergarten through fifth grade, English language, the English language assessment, so English Language Arts. So this is the performance. I think the broader takeaway on this is that we've seen some improvements in those groups of students, but largely, we've not seen a reduction in the gap because we've also seen improvements in the comparison population. So I think that that's broadly what I would like you to take away from this, that even though we are seeing some, you know, steps in the right direction, that the gap continues to be extremely large. So something, that's why we're very much focused on our equity work. Does that make sense?
Javier, I don't understand what the numbers mean. Like, what is...
Percentage, yeah. So this is the percentage of students who either meet or exceed state standards.
Okay. So then the EL population in that year, 17.4%, we're meeting the non-EL. So we're looking at, that gap is like 40?
50.
Oh, 50, huh. I obviously, okay. So 50, so then when we're looking at that, what our goal is to have that gap be more like 25? Is that what, okay, thank you.
Yeah, exactly. Okay. The other, in, just for the sake of time, we did not look at, you know, the middle school or the high school performance. I would just, you know, sort of, you will walk away with a similar, you know, a similar story from that, maybe with less in the middle school, maybe with less of an improvement for the population. But, you know, in general, I think the big takeaway that I would want you to have is that, you know, we have very significant gaps, and those gaps are not really decreasing anywhere near the rate that we would need them to decrease if we're going to cut that gap in half over the next, at this point, nine years. So some of the other things that we measure that are, you know, sort of, again, when we talk about the achievement gap being more than test performance, we talk a lot about the opportunity gap. And so when we talk about the opportunity gap, we mean, are we giving students equal access to the opportunities that are going to, you know, expose them to the level of content and the level of rigor that is going to allow them to be successful in school? and the level of rigor that is going to allow them to be successful in school? And so one of the areas that we look at is the enrollment of different populations in our gifted and talented programs. And so here you see similar, you know, a similar picture to what we, to what we saw on the other slide. A, an increase, sometimes a, you know, twofold, eightfold in some cases, increase in the percentage of, you know, English language learners, students with IEPs, students of color, students who are economically disadvantaged in those programs. But accompanied by a similar, you know, increase or a, you know, a very significant increase in the number of students who, you know, are not English language learners or are not IP students, who've also increased the percentage of those students. So I think this is a, this is a helpful one to sort of drill down on because when we saw those numbers in 1617, we met with our gifted and talented team and tried to understand what could be some of the reasons why those students were just not being identified for the programs. And as a result of those conversations, we changed the way that we, that we assessed and made those programs available to students away from something that was driven strictly by the performance on a single test to a more holistic approach that involved, you know, first having, you know, parent referrals and teacher referrals along with the assessments as a way to determine whether the students should be in those programs. And you can see that it really worked exactly the way that it was intended to and that it increased the percentage of students who have access to those programs. And so that's a good thing. But the fact that we, you know, continue to have dramatic gaps suggests that we need to do something else to be able to give access to, to those programs, to our students who are significantly underrepresented in the, in that, in that population. You see that even more dramatically when you look at the middle school, where the numbers have, you know, doubled in terms of the, the, sort of the non-students in these categories, or, you know, in the case of the non-economically disadvantaged have tripled. And, you know, we've seen very significant, you know, four times increases or even more than that in some of the populations that we are looking at. So our ELL, IEP and so on. But, you know, still a very significant gap between those populations. Any questions on that? All right. There's a theme emerging here, folks. When you look at AP data, you see a similar story. So this is advanced placement classes at the high school. You may have heard us talk about, you know, lowering the barriers to accessing those classes for students. And so you can see that there has been, you know, some progress in the percentage of students who are accessing those classes, both, you know, in the target populations and in the general population. You know, so you can see the, you know, across the board that, you know, compared to where we started in the baseline year, that we have more ELL students, more students who have IEPs, more students of color and more economically disadvantaged students in the classes. But generally, the gap has not reduced. I personally don't feel as badly about those, those gaps as long as we continue to make that, that increase for those populations. But it does continue to challenge us to think about why is it that we see those significant discrepancies in, in between groups? So I'm going to shift out of academics into some of our other goals. So looking at our whole student goal. The goal here is to increase the percentage of students who feel safe in school, who believe that there are adults in school that are, that they're connected to and who perceive that they are, that we're helping them to develop the habits and skills to, to manage, you know, to manage their social emotional being in an effective way. And so this compares the, the two years that we have data for, which were the 1718 and the 1819 year. Last year, because of the pandemic, again, we did not administer. This is a survey that we give to students in grades three through eight. And then there's a different measure that the state administers to all high school students that we glean this information from. And that is given every other year. That's why you see a gap here in 17 and 18 because this is the main, it's the high school youth survey. And this, you know, it's administered every other, it's administered every other year. So here you can see that, you know, in general, we've held steady at the elementary and middle school level in the, in the two years that we, or in the three years that we administered the assessment. And then at the high school that there was a significant drop from the, you know, the 201617 assessment of the Mihas to 1819, when it was last administered. This year it will be administered again. It's a, it's an assessment year for, for the high school. And we are on track to do our survey again this year. So we will, we will have fresh data on this as well. And then the other part of measuring whole students is, again, the same, the same kinds of perceptions, but this is from the parents' perspective. And so here you can see a fairly significant decrease from the baseline year, which was 1718, to the 1819 parent survey. So, you know, something that, again, we're preparing to do the, the survey again this year and it'll give us an indication of what are some of the areas where, how our families are experiencing school. So this looks at, you know, whether they feel that their school is welcoming to their children and to them and that where they feel that they're partners, that the school looks at them as, as partners in the educational process. And, you know, they feel good about the communication that they're getting from, from the school district.
Javier, can I say quickly, when, when are those usually done during the year? Is it like at a certain point?
Yep, parent teacher conferences. You may, you, you probably don't remember this, but you, when you go to parent teacher conferences in the spring, you would get a, a school messenger survey that would be sent to you and would, it would be open for a week and give you an opportunity to answer, you know, a number of questions that this then becomes the basis of.
So then when this is done, when it started again next year, it would be after the school years? And, oh, it is going to happen? So when we have our conferences?
Yeah, in spring when you have conferences.
Okay. That should be interesting.
I was gonna, if I could piggyback off that, not to, uh, do you think those numbers will accurately reflect? I mean, given the current circumstances, it's going to be pretty difficult to measure those, those variables with respect to the questions that are being asked.
I mean, I think there will always be an asterisk next to it. You know, it was the pandemic year, but yeah, I, I do think that it will be a true measure of how people feel about what we're doing now. It may not be that it's, you know, obviously what we're doing now isn't the same as what we were doing in 201617 or in 1819. Aaron, you had your hand up?
Just brief, it isn't actually going to be tied to spring parent conferences just because the schedule of conferences this year is different than historically in past years. But there'll be a window in either March or early April in the same way where you'll get a school messenger, but just, so small clarification.
Grace, did you, you came on camera, so I'm assuming you want to say something?
Aaron's, Aaron beat me, beat me to it. So he was, he said what I wanted to say. It's different this year.
Thank you, guys. All right. Anyone else? Anything? Okay. So then, last but not least, to our people goal and looking at our, what we measure ourselves on. And I'm glad Barb, you're here because I will butcher this as I always do. And so you can help me to, to recover from that. So we use, we administer a survey to all of our staff called the TNTP survey. This is, um, this is a survey that's administered to, you know, thousands of teachers across the country and hundreds of school districts. So the, one of the, we get lots of information from that survey. But the one that we use to report is what we call the employee engagement measure. And this is based on something that is used broadly in lots of sectors to measure employee engagement. It basically asks, it, it, it asks the person responding to the survey whether they would recommend working for Portland Public Schools to a family member or a close friend. And then we get points for people that say absolutely yes. So I think it's people who score like eight, nine or 10 on the scale. And we get points subtracted for people who score zero, one or two. And then everybody else in the middle, so four, five, six and seven, they don't count one way or the other. So what you see here is the number of points that we got from the eight, nine and tens minus the points that we got taken away from the zero ones and twos and what that added up to in each of those years. And so in 201718, it was a zero, which actually is okay. You wouldn't like think of it as being, you know, okay, but zero is, you know, there is a sort of a scale that looks at all of this and that's considered to be an okay, not great, but an okay score. And then it went down to minus four. And then last year, so to your questions earlier about, you know, in the pandemic, we were already on our way to administer the survey, so we didn't want to pull back from it. And so we administered the survey right as we were in the middle of the spring pandemic. And low and behold, it actually was higher than it had been in previous years. So, you know, we do think that it measures, you know, something different than what it was originally measuring, but that's where our score wound up. Barb, how did I do? Was I close?
Close, not too bad. It is, and it, maybe it makes sense for me when I'm talking next week to spend more time on it, explaining it because people get very confused about it. It's, it's basically people do score on, uh, you know, as he said, on a zero to 10 scale. There's what they call promoters, detractors, and then there's the passives. And so the people that actually vote zero to six are the detractors. Seven and eight are passes and nine and 10 are, are your promoters. It's converted to a percentage and so that's where it starts to get confusing, but I can spend more time on it next week.
Great. And then the other, the, and this is the last of our data slides, the last of the metrics is we look at the percentage of staff that are identified or identify themselves as people of color. We set our target in 2022 at 10%. And you can see the, the progression over the years. We're gonna, we're, you know, at the March 2nd board meeting, we're going to go in depth into some of this, some of this data. So while we feel generally good about this, I think that, you know, we still have a significant, a significant amount of work to do because the growth is in specific employee categories and not in others. And I think that that's where we want to, you know, we, we need to reassess what our goal, what our target is in this particular area. So.
Can I ask about that? Do you, um, do you know, like as of now, was it still at 10%? Since we don't have, um, you know, this year's up here. But I know some of the issues retaining staff too, right? So do you know as of now if it stayed there?
Barb would probably know that.
I have the data and I haven't gone, I mean, we have it, but I haven't spent a lot of time with it. I don't think that we see a reduction. What I have to do is actually, we have a lot of one-year-only hires this year. Looking, you know, we, because of all the people we hired, the extra hires. So I, I want to sort that out so we can actually see what's happening with our regular staff versus people we may have added this year.
Okay, but that is hopeful, I mean, to see, to see meeting that goal. So, okay, thanks.
And we, this is just a preview of, and you know, this weekend, I will send you the, the research study that we've been collaborating with, research team at looking at the experience of our educators of color. And so you'll get a look into that, you know. And as I mentioned earlier, on March 2nd, Barb is leading a board focus on educational issues around our diversity hiring. And we will look at all of this data. We will also look at that educator of color experience report. Okay. So that is a overview of the Portland Promise, what it is that we are, you know, what our goals are and where we are in relation to meeting those goals. So I, just before we move on to this next section, I don't know if you have any sort of all encompassing questions around any of that in addition to all of the specific questions that you might have asked.
I just have one question to follow up on that last slide. So that was the goal, 10% is 2022. So is there a further goal identified as far as percentage increasing? Or is that to be determined?
We've not gone through a formal process on that, Barbara. You know, to me, it would be, and this is where, when you drill down into this, you'll see that the bulk of the, this is in our ed tech and some of our operations departments, custodial maintenance, custodial food service in particular. So we'd like to see this be the, you know, so maybe setting the target across, you know, the different employee groups at 10% would be a better way for us to, to be looking at that. Certainly from my perspective, that's the way, and, you know, I, I know Barb and, you know, my whole team shares that, you know, that perspective.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have a, maybe it's an HR question, maybe it's a, I think we've perhaps covered some of it in the past, but those one-year hires, I think we recently approved a few of them. Are they associated with the union and do they? And do they, those who are hired for those one-year contracts, do they have, if we continue to fill that position or fund that position, do they have any kind of preferential treatment to stay in that position, or is it becomes open if it's, if it's refunded? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think, I, just, it's a, it's a, obviously a detailed question, it's a good question. In general, those one-year-only positions, if we, you know, they, those folks go away. They don't have any rights to positions that are currently in the district. Obviously, we have significant turnover from year to year, so to the extent that folks have been in those positions, they've done a good job in those positions, they're better positioned, if you will, to get a job if somebody leaves, because, you know, they have already been in the building and people know them, and, and so on. But, you know, those positions across the board don't have.
Thank you.
Help? And Barb, is there anything else you want to add to that? I can't see you.
Yes, the only thing I would add is that many of those positions are placeholders for people who are, say, in remote academies, so they're coming back to those positions.
I, as Javier was saying that, I think, yeah, no, I appreciate that, thank you.
I just want, one other quick thing, Javier, about just timing. I think, I think maybe because I had in my head the 10-year from the, from the earlier slides that we're kind of looking at the opportunity gap and having that goal over the years. So I think I'm still stuck on this, just, you know, is it kind of like, when you have here the 2000, you know, you have it year by year, has it been just short-term making these plans, or is like, do you, do you see that, that we should have something like our five-year plan? Or, you know, I'm just kind of trying to get in my head how the goals are being laid out and like the timeframe? Like how?
When we did the Portland Promise, we talked about those being five-year goals. So we're kind of at five years now.
Okay.
But we had, you know, in my team conversations about, you know, where do we go from here? So that'll be a conversation that we will have with the board, you know, sometime in the near future.
Okay, so this is kind of, this is, that helps. So this is over five years, and now maybe at this point saying, what is the next step for, okay, thank you.
I have a quick question about the payment. Overall, do we pay good in general in the district? I sometimes get excited to encourage those graduate recently to apply the district. I know a lot of staff do this job because they love to teach students, and, but comparing to, for example, social work at one of the agencies, in our social work in the school system, are they kind of close to each other when it comes to payment?
We mainly benchmark against other districts, and particularly other districts in the region, and we strive to be regionally competitive. So I think we're regionally competitive, but on the lower end of regionally competitive for teachers, definitely on the lower end for administrators. And Barb, I would say we're probably on the high end for ed techs. And on the low end for, for food service, custodial. Because we've made some changes to transportation, we're highly competitive in transportation.
Thank you.
Barb, would you agree with that?
Yes, there's a lot of nuances to what you've said, but yes, you know, the way our teacher scale is structured, there's obviously ability to, to earn more than you would earn in other places, but that is really awarded over longevity and people doing professional development. But yes, your statements are accurate.
Awesome. Okay. So, you know, there is a policy, because we have policies for lots of things, that speaks to having an organizational chart, so I'm not gonna, it's a policy, it's written, it exists, it's in board docs, and if you click through it on your own, you'll be able to see that there's a policy that requires that we maintain an organizational chart. This is what that looks like. So this is the current organizational chart for the Portland Public Schools. These presentations that you're going to have are on, you know, pretty much all of these branches, so you're going to hear from, from Aaron today, Assistant Superintendent of School Management. And, you know, as I mentioned earlier, you can hear from, from Grace, from, from Barb at the next meeting, and then the following meeting, you'll hear from Malia around teaching and learning, and from Kathy and/or Miranda, I'm not 100% sure how we're doing that one yet, we talked about it briefly the other day, about budget and finance. And today, we're going to talk about these things here, so food services, facilities, and transportation. I also function as what we would call the Chief Operations Officer, so those departments, even though they're not executive cabinet level, report directly to the superintendent, but I, you know, we often, in our own discourse around these things, talk about, you know, are you saying, you know, am I saying that as the superintendent, or am I saying that as the Chief Operations Officer? Because obviously, as superintendent, I'm the superintendent. As Chief Operations Officer, I'm one of the cabinet members. So, so they report directly to me and my function as Chief Operations Officer, so I'm going to walk through that. And as I mentioned, we now have somebody coming in that we've offered the position to and accepted yesterday to be the Director of Data and Technology, so I'm going to cover that today as well. So that's what we're, what we're going to do today. I'm gonna just, can we take a five-minute break? My dog just barked, and I need to take care of that real quick. I'm sorry about that.
No worries, you're faster than my ability to put up what will be right back slide, so.
All right. So that's what we're doing next, so. So this is the organizational structure for our data and technology unit, so directly reporting to the Executive Director of Data and Technology. We have two Assistant Directors, one Assistant Director of Data, and there are staff that report up to her. And then, and so that's really our student information system, the way that we manage all of the attendance, discipline, all of our different data within the district, as well as the maintenance of that system, and all of the reporting to the state and to other entities that, you know, that request data from us. So that's all under Jamie Kearney, who some of you have met because she's often presented on some things at the, at the board level. And then we have really the infrastructure of the department, so that is both the, the network, our wireless systems, our phone systems, all of the backbone of the organization, and our team of technicians, who are the people that support the, you know, 10,000 devices that are deployed across the district, both to students and to staff, you know, all of the, you know, boxes and wires that we have, you know, across the district. This is the work of our technicians team. So that's the organization of our IT department. To give you an idea, and you'll see this, this is how we've organized for all of these departments, just to give you some key sort of metrics, key performance indicators, ways to think about the work that they do. So the total budget is $1.8 million. About a million of that is for all of those people that you saw, and then the other 800,000 is non-personnel. So that's, you know, the purchase of new equipment, the maintenance of new equipment, the licenses for different software and programs that we have. So that's what that budget, that's what that budget is. And we mentioned earlier what the organization is and the total full-time equivalent, so the total number of full-time positions in the department is 11. There's 4.3 techs, so that's, you know, there's somebody who is not a full-time person, the total number of IT staff is 11. And just to give you sort of an understanding of what that means, that means that there's 667 teachers and students for every person in IT. So, you know, at some point, for the Operations Committee, we just completed an in-depth study of our IT infrastructure and spending, and compared it to districts that are like us and are considered to be industry leaders, to sort of benchmark where we are in relation to that. And so this data comes from that study, so just, you know, sort of record that number because that will be something that we will go back to at some point. And then this gives you an idea of the total number of devices that we expect to have in the hands of teachers and students when we complete our rollout of devices. So this is the, you know, the stuff that we've talked about in other meetings, the number of devices that are, that are managed by our T, by our IT team currently. Any IT questions? All right. So let's move on to facilities. So I, I'm not, I don't have organizational charts for those departments, so I didn't, I didn't put that in here, but do want to just spend a little bit of time talking about the key performance indicators. So facilities is a large part of our budget, $8.5 million. Of that, 5.6 is in non-personnel. So, you know, just to give you an idea what goes into that, $2 million is utilities, so that, you know, gives you, you know, a perspective on the kinds of things that are there. All of our contracts for, you know, a million dollars is a contract for, with the city for maintaining our HVAC. So our heating and ventilation systems are under contract with them, you know, our, we pay the city for the plowing of streets and lots. On the peninsula, we have a contract with an outside vendor to do the same work off peninsula. So those are the kinds of things that are in the non-personnel, in the non-personnel budget. The total full-time equivalent positions is 86. Of those positions, 75 are custodial positions in schools. So those are, you know, our two shifts of custodians in all of our buildings. They manage 20 facilities, so that gives you an idea of how many people on average are in each of those buildings. The remaining FT, so the other 11, are our district-wide maintenance teams, so those are the folks that work, you know, on HVAC, that come and fix windows that are broken, that, you know, maintain our locks and things along those lines, as well as our management structure, which is our Director of Facilities, our Facilities Coordinator, and our Custodial Supervisor. Those are the three management positions that are, that oversee the remaining 83 individuals in the department. Some, you know, key performance indicators for you to keep in mind, our estimated facilities maintenance needs, we did a significant report in 2017 by Cebago Technics. You, some of you may have heard this referred to, or you will over the years. The Cebago Technics report looked at every system in every one of our buildings and did an evaluation of where those systems stood in relation to, you know, how long they would be functional. And so as a result of that, they were able to catalog all of our facilities' needs over a 20-year period, and they came up with this figure that you'll hear us talk about, which is $300 million over 20 years. To put that in context, what we spend on capital improvement, which is the bulk of what is necessary to be able to keep up with those facilities' needs, is ranges from one to $4.5 million last year, which was the largest CIP that we've had in a significant period of time. So, you know, when you think of, you know, 300 million over 20 years and what that would require, and you compare that to what we're able to spend on it, it helps you to understand why we're at $300 million, because this is not something new, this is not something that we just now are spending less than what we would need to spend to be able to keep our systems in, you know, top, in tip-top shape. So we are always constrained by resources, as are all public entities. And so that gives you an idea of that, of the gap. I did want to spend a minute on the Buildings for Future grant, because, or the Buildings for Future bond, because that was very much an effort on the part of the community to say, you know, at $1 to $5 million a year, we're never going to be able to fix our schools. And we have a number of elementary schools that are in, you know, really are now 21st century buildings, and, you know, we went out and the community supported a $64 million bond. Of that, about $40 million of, you know, the things that are currently projected for us to do in the Buildings for Future, will basically take $40 million off of this $300 million. So, you know, there's things that we're doing that were not a part of the Cebago Technics report, so for example, building a gym onto Lysef or, you know, cafeteria onto Longfellow. uh, cafeteria onto, uh, Longfellow and things along those lines. That, um, was not assessed in the Cebago Technics report because the Cebago Technics report looked at the stuff that was there, not the stuff that was, you know, envisioned. So that's why, you know, the 64 million doesn't all just like come off of that, a total number. Um, you know, there are things that we're not doing in those schools that, um, will need to be done at some point in the future. You know, whether it's row lifts or whether it's, you know, new, um, uh, HVAC systems and things along those lines, um, that, uh, that we will need to do in the future. But are still functional and are within the life of the, you know, in the, the proper functioning life of those systems. Questions on facilities? All right, um, so, uh, food service. Um, the total, uh, expenditure in the budget is, um, about, uh, you know, just under $4 million. Of that, 2 million is in non-personnel. The bulk of that is in food. So, you know, the purchase of the food that we then serve to students is also included in that, um, $2 million. Um, and our total FTE, so the total number of people working to prepare and serve, um, food in the district is, um, 36, um, 36 FT. Um, some key performance indicators. Um, this is, um, you know, um, mostly pre-pandemic. The, uh, total number of meals that we served, um, uh, annually prior to the pandemic was just over a million. Um, and that is broken out into, you know, um, just about half were breakfast and a little bit more than half, um, were lunches. And then, you know, uh, number of, um, snacks and, um, summer meals. So that's the, that's the, sort of the aggregate, um, number of meals that we served, um, prior to the pandemic. Um, here's some, uh, additional, uh, sort of important numbers to have in mind. Um, how much we spent on food. Um, so again, if you think of that budget that I mentioned earlier of, um, 3.8 million, about 1.4 of that was, um, for actual buying of food. Um, some key things for you to keep in mind. Um, we get reimbursed by the, um, by the federal government for our meals. And this gives you an idea of what that reimbursement is for each of those, um, different meals. So for breakfast, for lunch and for, um, for a snack. And then, um, I put in here as well, just to sort of give you, um, an idea of what we actually charge to our not free and reduced lunch, um, families. Um, this, this is what we charge, um, per breakfast and what we charge per lunch, um, for those, um, for those meals. Questions on food service?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, um, so I had been emailing Javier some questions about some of this stuff. So I have some in my mind already, but I wanted to just clarify. So like when we're talking about distributing meals, I mean, we only get reimbursed if that meal is, gets into a child's hand, right? Like if, if that, that meal has to be taken, right? Like if we're in this, um, situation of, we've been talking about distributing meals and how many fewer students are getting the meals. So it's really the issue, we're not getting reimbursed for all of those, half as many meals or whatever, is that right?
Correct. We're also not spending as much money on, on food, right? Because we're not, you know, we're not preparing as, you know, we're not. But yes, you're absolutely right. We, um, the reason that we have that, um, that gap that we talked about at the last board meeting that we are looking to fill, um, with, uh, general fund is because we're serving significantly fewer meals. We have some fixed costs, right? Our staff are still working for us and, um, working hard and doing what we ask them to do, but we're getting less revenue because we're serving less meals.
Can you just remind me, because I know you had the figures, but so from this school year, what does that, what does that deficit look like of less?
I think it's 850 is what we're estimating.
Oh, I remember that now. Okay.
And I, it's, I don't remember that, um, you know, so I don't have it like as, you know, sort of in, in my mind. I think it's 1.5 million less in revenue and 700 or 650 less in food, um, expenditures. So it, you know, I think the gap is somewhere in the neighborhood of 850. Um, I wonder if I have, I don't have that open here, so I can't, um. I had it open at some point, but it's, um, now closed. And, um, so, so, um, that sort of sticks out in my mind. And I can get you the exact number, or.
No, that helps me just understand that I would think I wasn't getting the two pieces of the, not getting the reimbursement plus the, but also the part of not having to, you know, purchase as much food. So thank you. That helps me get my.
But still having the fixed costs. Okay, um, last but not least, um, is transportation. So transportation is $3.5 million in the budget. And about 1.3 of that is, um, non-personnel. And so non-personnel, um, in the context of, um, of transportation is obviously fuel, maintenance of our vehicles, which we contract, um, out to the, um, we have a partnership with, um, the South Portland School District for, um, the maintenance of our, uh, of our fleet. Um, they also have, um, in transportation, they hold the contract, um, with, uh, our crossing guard, um, company. So the, the company that, um, provides us, um, crossing guards, um, for our schools. And they also hold the contract with Metro to transport our, um, high school students. So about 250 of that 1.3 is the contract with, um, Metro. About 200 is the contract with the, um, crossing guards and, um, 120 or so is the contract with South Portland for the, um, for the maintenance of our, um, of our fleet. In addition to that, there's parts for maintenance and things along those lines, which is over and above. So that's where the, that's where the bulk of that, um, non-personnel, um, money goes. Um, total FTE is 39. That includes, um, I, that includes, um, free office, um, staff. So our director, uh, 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 operations manager and, um, a, uh, somebody who manages the routing of our buses. So when people call and say that they need to change, you know, this kid from this route to that route, that's, that's, um, that's who does that. Um, I didn't mention in, um, food service, our food service, um, structure is we have a director and a, um, uh, uh, supervisor, um, who is primarily oversees the, um, the operation at the high schools where there is, you know, where there are kitchens at each of the high schools. And then there's a, um, kitchen supervisor at, um, our central kitchen, um, building that oversees the, um, the operation, the, the, you know, the staff that work to make the meals that get shipped out to our, um, elementary and middle schools. Um, so that's our organizational structure on, um, food service. So some, just some, you know, um, uh, indicators around this. Um, the, prior to the pandemic, on a daily basis, we transported, um, about 2,200 students. Um, we have 44 buses, mini buses and vans on our, in our fleet. Um, on average, we, again, prior to the pandemic, drove about 337,000 miles. Um, and, you know, that's, uh, you know, one of the things that, that this is often used as a, as a KPI in, um, in looking at transportation, but it varies greatly from district to district. We're obviously an urban district, so our buses don't travel as far as others, but they do have significant wear and tear on their travel because they're doing more, you know, stopping and starting than, you know, driving long distances. Um, 160 routes, um, on any given day prior to the pandemic. And, um, so those 40, those 44 buses basically do three rounds every day. Um, so that's, you know, um, that's how, uh, that's how we function. You know, our, our schools, as you know, are operating on three different, um, start schedules. And so a bus will, you know, drop kids off at one site, you know, um, go pick up another round of kids, bring those kids to another site. You know, go pick up another round of kids and bring kids to that third site. So that's on a, on any given day. And then they do that again in the afternoon. And they, um, also oftentimes have what you see at the bottom, which is field trips and athletic activities, um, in the middle of the day or on the, um, or on the, uh, back end of the day. And, you know, prior to the pandemic, so the last year that we have data for in 2018, um, they did, uh, just over 2,000, um, 2,000 trips. So that's operations. And, you know, any questions that you have, um, before we pass this over to Aaron to talk about, um, school management?
Javier, are there bus aides at all?
Yep, they're included in that, um, in that staff. We don't have a bus aide on every, um, one of our vehicles, but we do on, um, a number of routes, routes that have, uh, pre-kindergarten students, routes that have students with, um, disabilities and some of our larger, um, routier routes.
Okay, so it is determined by that. I was just wondering how it's determined by the populace. So, so it could be that there's some groups that are challenging for a bus driver to manage, that there would be.
Yeah, but, you know, where we have lots of kids and, you know, that, that tends to be the ones that we would have bus, um, bus aides on.
Okay, thanks.
All right, if nobody else has a question, I will stop sharing and turn this over to, um, Assistant Superintendent Townsend.
Great, um, good evening, everybody. Nice to see you all, um, spending so much wonderful time together lately, it seems. So it's good to see you, um, Warren, Jeff, um, and Yusuf. Nice to have you here. Um, we had policy committee last night, so, um, the, uh, can I share screen? Yep, okay. All right, um, so yeah, excited to kind of give you the overview of school management and kind of the work, um, that I hold for the organization. Um, uh, so, um, on my org chart is, uh, you know, the slice that was on the one that Javier referenced, um, you know, is kind of looks like this. So, um, you know, in a sense, you know, um, my department, you know, I don't, I, I have, nobody really actually at central office that I supervise. So my department is all out in the field. So primarily that is the school leaders, um, the co-curricular work. Um, the co-curricular directors are, are directly supervised by the principals. I don't supervise them, so, um, but the, as I'll speak about, you know, kind of oversee the co-curricular program in general, our career and technical ed work and adult education. Um, and then there's, um, an executive assistant that now Anne supervises, um, but kind of provides support to my office as well as Grace's office. Um, so that's, um, you kind of the big picture of the org chart. Uh, so a little bit more of some of the kind of details about the, the department. So I have, so nominally you would say, um, you know, and again, this doesn't feel like a traditional department in the same way that many other departments will present as, right? Um, but we have, uh, you know, within my, um, kind of span of control, um, I supervise 19 folks. So, um, I have 13 principals that I supervise, four teacher leaders, so those are the three at Reiki and one that, um, uh, leads Peaks and Cliff Island Island Schools. Um, our CT director, which is, you know, our paths director, and then our adult ed director. So all of those are direct reports to me that I supervise. Um, and beyond that, that's it. And those, that's, which, you know, is plenty. Um, but, um, the budget again for my office, given that, you know, really all of my work happens through the principals and through the schools, I don't, you know, own a significant budget, um, you know, uh, you know, in the context here. So there's some money that's allocated that goes toward school, you know, the school leader professional development. You know, in different times, some of our retreats, conferences, things like that, to be able to build the capacity of our school leaders, um, to be effective instructional leaders and then other kind of office operational items. Um, so again, not a huge budgetary piece that I own within the context of the organization. Um, and then just kind of what is the role and the function of the school management department? And so the first, you know, boat here really summarizes kind of the main, the gist of the work, um, which is, you know, kind of supervising all of our school leaders to accelerate school improvement efforts. So, um, you know, those broader district-wide measures that we looked at at the beginning of the Portland Promise. I mean, we own collective responsibility across the organization for those, but, um, certainly in the context of school performance, those, I view those as as well, measures, um, for our work. Um, then, you know, the second boat is really speaks to kind of being the liaison between bringing the school perspective to the central office, right? As we, um, execute our work and bringing the central office perspective to school. So really kind of, um, playing a role in between, um, you know, the, the field and the central office as we're, um, you know, thinking, you know, thinking about our initiatives, the rollout, um, and, you know, system-wide things. And so bringing principal lens to that as well as, um, helping principals understand kind of a system-wide view of things. Uh, as I mentioned briefly earlier, I kind of chair, which sounds maybe a little more formal than it should be, but coordinate the co-curricular council across our, um, high schools and middle schools. So we meet, um, you know, at least quarterly, if not more, um, regularly engage our city partners in that work to, you know, um, develop all the athletic and co-curricular opportunities for secondary students. Um, and then lastly, certainly is, um, Jeff and Nora are familiar, um, facilitate the board policy committee and, you know, the staff, um, person for that committee. And again, feels like, um, apt in terms of how I'm positioned within the organization, um, in terms of as we consider policy and the, the development of kind of the rules of the road, if you will, from policy and then supporting the implementation of that, um, within the context of the school. So, um, feels, um, you know, kind of clearly aligned. The other piece I just wanted to offer a little bit, and I don't have much more really to share, is just a little bit of notion about kind of the role of principal supervision in the context of the organization and how that sits, um, kind of within the field comparatively in terms of other districts. So, you know, there has been kind of a focus, um, you know, over the past, you know, 10 years on the role of principal supervision. I mean, extending from the role of principals as instructional leaders and the impact, you know, effective principals can have on student achievement as an effect of that, right? Um, really looking at how do we grow and, um, strong instructional leaders at all schools and the role that principal supervision plays in that. So it really reflects, you know, a shift away from kind of, um, you know, the focus of just like management and kind of traditional supervision, um, and compliance orientation to one more where it's a focus on kind of building the, our leaders' capacity to be instructional leaders in their building and accomplish the, you know, goals that we have within the Portland Promises we shared before. So, um, that's been a shift, you know, um, you know, in the way the work is kind of held and I think an evolution, um, in districts. And so, you know, I mean Javier Barb and Grace could speak to this more. Um, prior to my joining, had done work with a national organization, um, PDK. You know, looking at that work and how we are organized as a district to kind of support that. So certainly it's not my work exclusively. Um, it's definitely a combination and collaboration across the, um, the cabinet. Um, but given that, um, ultimately the supervisor for all the principals, that's kind of the primary holder of that work. And just a little scale perspective. And just a little scale perspective in that field, generally kind of recommendations to kind of do this work. And the level of depth, right, that it really requires is, you know, recommendations can be often to have kind of a span of control of supervising, you know, ten to twelve principals. So, and from my experience in other districts as well, you know, nineteen is a, is a relatively big number to be able to provide everybody kind of the, you know, FaceTime support folks that folks need. But it's, you know, we have a great crew and there's a different, different levels of needs. So, able to kind of prioritize time to focus energy in schools where it's needed. So, what I'm sharing here is just a few kind of notions of what they, I talk about as principal supervisor standards. So, just intended to illustrate a little bit of like what the work looks like when we're thinking about supervising principals. So, dedicating time to helping them grow as instructional leaders. So, that looks like me, you know, kind of having regular routines. Certainly been working back into those with COVID. But of spending time one-to-one with principals, coaching, debriefing, situ, you know, work. Also in being partners with them, observing, participating in leadership team meetings or PD meetings, things like that, to be able to kind of be connected to the work and give them feedback as they grow. You know, thinking about their professional learning and helping to set goals and provide some of the opportunities for them, both, you know, through our coaching and conversations as well as connecting them to other leaders and learning opportunities to be able to achieve those goals. Then, you know, this third bullet really speaks to kind of determining, you know, their effectiveness and what some of the improvements are necessary to ensure we're meeting everybody's needs. So, this broadens a little bit to think about what are, you know, within the context of the Portland Promise goals, what are an individual school's goals and what are the leadership moves that folks need to make and how do they need to grow to be able to accomplish that? So, that kind of rests in what we refer to as our school success planning routines that we hold for schools where kind of, within the context of the overarching strategic plan, schools are making, you know, kind of annual plans around their goals and strategies. And so, I do coaching and kind of monitoring and evaluation of that with them. And then, you know, the last is kind of engaging in the formal evaluation process. Again, in ways that is not, you know, not always, or lends itself to growth orientation. You know, it's kind of the primary way of orienting and supporting our leaders. One more, just kind of quick slide, then kind of pivots to then thinking about the role. Again, in this, you know, speaks to kind of the role of collaborating at the central office level on, you know, on behalf of principals and kind of holding that principal perspective. So, that's, you know, what you see in the first couple of bullets here, advocating in, for and informing the coherence of the organizational vision. So, helping to kind of make the connections between our district-wide visions, systems and structures and the execution on the ground. And then, you know, thinking about from the ground up that our district piece. And again, you know, this is, you know, I don't view all of this as solely my work, but hold responsibility for ensuring that, you know, we're also filtering up from the school level to inform our district-wide deliberations and conversations. So, that's kind of what the second bullet refers to. And then the last couple are thinking about, you know, our ongoing growth, you know, as leaders and instructional leaders in the district and modeling that for, for principals. And then last, thinking about kind of our strategic change efforts to make sure that we're meeting everybody's needs. So, these are, you know, what we refer to as the principal supervisor standards in ways that we kind of organize and talk about the work of school management and principal supervision. So, that might be helpful to share that because my department, as it were, you know, is different than, you know, transportation and other departments and even academics and HR and Grace's team. Given that I don't have, you know, I have the fortune of being able to be out in the field. I like to think in normal times is my office is my car more than my space in the central office. So, that's, that's school management for you. Happy to entertain any questions.
I'm just curious, Aaron. And I heard you say like the needs must be really different, right? Depending on how new an administrator is, their school building, what's going on, right? And you said nineteen, which is a lot. Do you, I mean, in theory, when you said the face-to-face is your goal to have like a regular, is that part of your expectation is that as they're requiring or needing that you're trying to have the face-to-face? And I don't know what that looks like in COVID, but that there is like a regular face-to-face to just discuss goals and that kind of thing, is that?
Yep, um, yeah, I think, you know, we do some work to kind of prioritize, you know, the frequency and cadence of those. So, it's at least monthly for all leaders. And depending on the school and the situation, you know, I aspire to, for some schools, a weekly touch base. Either, either the kind of one-to-one coaching or, or just being present at something at the school, right? To be able to continue to stay grounded in the work, you know. You know, we try and hold it in the context of the school's success plan. What are their goals for the year? What are the kind of key strategies, right? And be participating, kind of monitoring the execution of those, right? And just strategizing about it even more than monitoring. And then some sit with kind of like a couple of touch points a month. So, all schools at least once a month, some twice a month. Some we work towards having a weekly check-in.
That's impressive. That's impressive. I guess I really didn't realize. I mean, and do you feel like this, our district is small enough that you, I mean, again, not in COVID. And I know this is, a lot of your experience has been during COVID, right? But like, do you feel like it is enough, small enough that you really can be in the buildings and getting a sense of what is going on for the leadership?
Well, I mean, I think, you know, I feel like I'm, you know, coming into the district new last year. It was a, a lot of getting up to speed, you know. I feel like had, had I been a prince, you know, in my prior district, right? You know, carrying a bunch of institutional knowledge, you know, would have accelerated that. But I felt like I was totally getting into the groove, you know, and then, you know, March thirteenth rolled in. And so, you know, it's been, you know, you know, we've had different priorities for the moment, right? In terms of how we've been executing, but feel like we're now back to a bit of a new normal, have totally a much better sense of kind of the leaders and what's happening. And so, I mean, I wish I could spend that much time in all schools, you know. You know, once a month doesn't feel enough necessarily. But fortunately, we have a really strong group of school leaders. And so, know that we have some folks who are, you know, just outstanding. I mean, we have nationally recognized school leaders in our system. And so, I do feel like I can prioritize my time effectively.
But I, I do, and I know that Aaron mentioned, and I don't, I guess I'll just underscore that, that the standards, you know, when we look at the research around principal supervision, the standard is, you know, for a significantly less span of control than what, than what Aaron has. And Aaron has additional responsibilities on top of that. You know, as you guys know, he spent, you know, a good portion of time last night on, you know, policy work, which is part of his, you know, assignments as well. You know, just to sort of put it in context, I have ten direct reports, I think it's ten, might be eleven. But, you know, so that's more in keeping with the standard that is prescribed for, for a principal supervisor. And so, you know, if we could, if we could have twice as many Aaron's, we would probably be, you know, right where the standard, you know, would call for. But, you know, that's, that's just important to recognize that.
Yeah, thank you. That's, that's helpful to know. Javier, is there like in Maine or nationally? Like, I just don't have a sense, like, would the, I mean, I heard Aaron, you shared that, that number of what maybe is a reasonable amount of people to supervise. But is there like a national, I, I just don't have a sense of, you know, do most principals get to see their supervising, you know, across the country once a month? Like, is that even typical, do you think? Yeah, that would be.
I don't know, yeah, I don't, I don't have a good answer for that. That, that you should probably see them more often than that. Again, if I only saw Aaron once a month, I don't think that I would be doing a very good job of supporting him and, you know, his work. You know, I try to, you know, schedule one-on-ones with my direct reports every week for the executive level folks. And then I have bi-weeklies with my, with the operations departments that I talked about. So, you know, for Aaron to be able to do that, I don't know, you know, I don't think it's, it's anywhere near possible.
I guess I was thinking, I'm sure you're having all this other. Right, not just face-to-face, like that you're having. But I guess to me, having that many people, if you're doing a face-to-face once a month, that seems like a lot. But I just wondered, I didn't know if there was any standard, just because I don't know. But, um, yeah, that is, that helps me understand the breadth of work you're doing with the polit, and that, and then like you said, how they, they interconnect, right? That you're doing this policy work, but I think how awesome that then you have relationships with all the leaders that we want to be implementing the policy work. So, that helped me just kind of see how, you know, those pieces of your work come together, so, yeah.
And something I probably should have put on the bulleted list, you know, there. I mean, it falls under kind of the, you know, professional learning stuff. It is, can you guys hear me okay? You know, is the, you know, it's really in a lot of collaboration with Malia. So, Malia and I really, you know, work very closely together. Again, it's part of why I'm, you know, our cabinet team in terms of how we work together. But in particular for she and I. But thinking about the school leader professional development. So, we have, you know, it's shifted depending on our context. But currently, you know, we, like tomorrow, I have, we have an hour and a half meeting with all the high school principals and assistant principals. And then we have another hour and a half meeting with all the middle school principals and assistant principals. So, it's like twice a month, we have that, twice a month, we have the elementary team. And then we coordinate, you know, a system-wide kind of leadership meeting. Right now, in this context, it's weekly, our weekly business meeting on Mondays. And so, kind of the holder of the reins for those, it's a partnership, you know, with all of cabinet, you know, on that. But those are kind of the accountable one for ensuring kind of we're ready and to execute on those as well. And so, not all of the contact comes necessarily one-to-one. Those are important vehicles for, you know, interaction support structure as well. So, it's, you know, they, they get plenty of support from one another too, right? And so, it's about helping to create space for that.
Any other questions for Aaron? All right.
Can I just say one comment? As a new school board member and Kathy, welcome. Everybody always said that this, this is an exorbitant amount of time for an individual to take, to be, to be on the board. After hearing all of this, I'm feeling less so. The amount of work that, I mean, whether it's a Sunday email or a Saturday update from Javier, Aaron, or Grace's work, and Anne, I know you're there all the time, I'd just give you a shout out. I don't, I don't think many board members have room to complain with respect to the time that it's utilized after hearing most of that. So, thank you all for your work.
Yusuf, did you have a question?
I'm sorry.
Your net is unstable.
Yeah, I was exactly about to say what Jeff just said. And my first meeting with Javier was, I mentioned the email he sent me on Sunday and how informational it was and how it gave me a bigger picture about what's going on daily and how it's important. So, day after day, I'm learning a lot, appreciating more and more how much you guys doing for the district. And, yeah, we, the board should be backing you and, yeah, we got your back. Thank you.
I'm sorry, my internet was unstable, so I did not, I did not hear. I heard Yusuf, I didn't hear Jeff, so I apologize for that. But I think because Yusuf started by saying that he was going to echo what Jeff said, I think it was also just recognizing the, the significant amount of work that, that the team does. You know, I, I, I say this with, you know, with complete conviction. I've worked, you know, I'm, you know, thirty-plus years in education. And this is by far the, you know, the smartest, most devoted, most like-minded group of leaders that I've ever worked with. So, it's, you know, it's just amazing every day what we accomplish with this group. And so, I'm very, very fortunate to have that, so.